All right. Thank you all very much. We now pitch to the Fire Department Annual Report.
Thank you Mayor Haas and members of council, Mr. Dill, Mr. Ewald, staff present, and the citizens of Fort Thomas, for allowing me to again stand before you as your fire chief. It is a privilege and honor to give to you the Fort Thomas Fire Department 2016 Annual Report, our 112th year of operation. 2016 was again a very busy and productive year for the Fire Department. In total, we made 1,768 runs, fire EMS, first response, et cetera. We remain the fourth busiest department in the county behind Newport, Bellevue-Dadeon, and Central Campbell. And again, I'd just like to take a minute and thank some select people. Melissa Kelly kind of helps put this book together for me every year, so I appreciate Melissa's intuitiveness into that. Again, I'd like to thank the department heads. I try to do that every year. It's a privilege and honor to work with the various department heads, whether that be Debbie Buckley, Kevin Barbian, or the gentleman to my left, Chief Daly. We probably have the closest working relationship, obviously safety-minded, in police and fire. Mike and I have open-door policies and we're all the time running across the hall to one another and just bouncing stuff off of each other. So I appreciate Chief the availability to do that. But I also like to thank, and I have Shift Three's here tonight, Captain Webster and Lieutenant Darty, I'd like to thank the shift people that are here as well as my entire department. I have, I can tell you, the 18 best firefighter paramedics in Northern Kentucky. No doubt, hands down, they are the best in the business. They do it day in and day out, and yeah, you can applaud because they do it day in and day out. It's exceptionally easy to be the fire chief, quite honestly, at Fort Thomas. And you gave me that privilege some near 13 years ago. They do a whale of a job, and I thank them. And I'm going to talk about a couple of things that some of the people in the audience, in particular Shift Three, was involved with this past year, and just showing you how they do their job. But thanks to everybody that works for me and works in the Fire Department. And that includes Elaine Henderson, our administrative assistant, does a great job. Our mission statement, which you see in the book, is to provide fire and EMS services in an efficient and professional manner, along with assisting our neighboring departments. Again, yeah, we do ask for help from other departments, but in turn, we also give them help each day when they need it. And you can see that in my monthly report on the mutual aid received and given, as well as in the annual report. So I invite you to look at those kinds of things. Firefighting still remains the second most stressful job in 2016. And last year, I gave everybody a wristlet to wear because our motto is "Everybody Goes Home." At 7:30 in the morning, the job, my job, the main job, is to make sure that those people go home every day. The numbers, Lieutenant Darty, who sits on the Kentucky Fire Commission Board, correct me if I'm wrong, last year, 90 firefighters in the United States lost their lives, line of duty deaths. That number has been over 100 for a number of years. And so it's coming down, and that's good. That's what we want, those numbers to come down. Out of those 90, 32 were career firefighters like our department. We're all career. 47 volunteer and 11 wildland firefighters. Actually, in Kentucky alone, five, we had five line of duty deaths. And also, with structured fires, we had 63 civilian fatalities. So our job is not only like getting our people home, you know, every morning, but also to make sure that we have the best fire prevention tasks out there and presented to the public that we absolutely can. And we do that day in and day out. I'd like to just take a minute, run through some things on the book with you, and then at the end, we'll field some questions that you may or may not have. If you look at the cover, the cover was kind of a thought I had this year. Chris Russ designed the cover for me, where we have 2016, and obviously surrounded by myself, but surrounded with the three shifts, as well as our newest piece of equipment, Engine 601, the 2011 engine that we have. Also, we had a couple of retirements last year. Those of you on council that were with us knew that. And so we had a couple of retirement parties, and we had a great turnout, which we usually do. Once a month, we have what we call a retiree luncheon, the first Tuesday of every month. We invite the retirees to come back and have lunch with the shifts. And we have a good turnout every month. Those guys enjoy that, coming back. And so at the retirement party, there was a great crowd there, so I started taking some pictures. So I thought, well, you know, kind of young and old, old and new, however you want to look at it. And that's kind of as we get into 2017, what the city's looking at, you know, from back in 1867 to current. So we took a lot of pictures, those outside pictures, photos, snapshot headshots are from our retirees, as well as the engine in the middle, which is the one I own. You see it every year in the parade. And myself and retired Chief Edmondson, we own that, and we have a blast with that thing. Again, 604 ran the streets, pumped water for Beverly Hills, and pumped water at the Highlands High School fire for many years. So just to cover, I wanted to kind of point out some things there. If you go through the book, I'm just going to point out a couple of things as we go through. You've obviously had the manual, you have a chance to look at it. Again, my phone, and door is always open. If you have a question, stick your head in and let me know what your thoughts are, because again, I work for you, we work for you. Again, just a letter to the mayor that we do every year, is page one. Page two and three are kind of my perspective on the year, kind of summarizations of, summaries of our monthly reports that we've had, things that have gone on. Of course, our Fire Department mission statement is on page four. And then, as I said, my wonderful staff, the best in the business, with the captains and lieutenants on page five, as well as the firefighter paramedics on page six. Had some new additions this year. Mike Stratey's in the crowd tonight on Shift Three, and Brandon Frohmeyer on Shift One. And so again, they added to that great expertise. The organizational structure of the department's on page seven, and the breakdown of what the jobs are is on page eight. You know, I couldn't do everything in the Fire Department, nor could, in this case, Captain Webster, Lieutenant Darty do it, or anybody else. Everybody has a specific job in the Fire Department to do, whether it be small equipment, or whether it be, you know, facilities maintenance to help break mounts with things that we need done day in and day out, vehicle maintenance, Captain Amon. There's a lot of things that goes on. So again, everybody has a job, and those jobs are listed there. And I couldn't ask for, again, more expertise than those people that do those, and kind of make sure we get what we need accomplished. Administrative Secretary or Administrative Assistant, Elaine Henderson's on page nine, as well as, of course, our two retirees that retired in August, Captain Parker and Lieutenant Rass, Steve Rass. So we lost some great people, but they've been back for lunch, so they're still around. The grant process that we're very proud of, that Lieutenant Darty heads up, is on page 10 and 11. And so we again had a very successful year with the grants, as we do. We have outlined them back, all the way back to 2001 before me. And so we've outlined those. But again, a wonderful year for grants, again, on page 11, had a nice photo of our new MSA air packs, which again, to my right, I have one in the chair, we brought up. I invite you after the meeting to take a peek at it, as the mayor did pick it up. It's heavy, and when you have all your gear on, it's heavier. So again, we're very proud of that $130,000 grant that we got for those MSA air packs. And again, thanks to, as always, our treasurer, financial wizard there, Mr. Ewald, and kind of making sure that we can get all those things done. And again, Rick orchestrated that through the assistance of firefighter grant in FEMA. So just some ideas there, or just some things that we've done with the grant process. We look for everything out there. We have one now in, again, for a gear dryer through Kentucky Office of Homeland Security. Professional affiliations is 12 and 13 and 14. Kind of shows you what we do there, and who we deal with day in and day out with our professional affiliations. Starting on page 15 is the Public Fire Safety Education Programs. You can look at that. Lieutenant Eric Sherpenberg took that hands-on, took that chore, and ran with it. We have a number. We've already got some calls out this year for the YMCA and other places. We're out doing public fire education, or people are stopping in every day. The doors are open, especially now with the warmer weather, and we get a lot of people stopping in. I had someone call the other day and say, can we bring some preschoolers up? Absolutely, anytime, stop in. That's what we're there for. Those people back there, they love that. And so, you know, again, they do a great job. But that goes through the ranks there, through the pages, as you get up to page 20. So again, our public fire education is very important. Staff development, Captain Lump is our fire training officer. And again, he's got some statistics there, some graphs, things you can look at, breakdown on training, and how we do various parts of training. Of course, I report to that in some way, shape, or form every monthly report. So he's got that all detailed, some nice photographs. And we do some outside training with our people, and those are things are listed there too, on page 23. This year, we did the SAVE program, as I mentioned, about a year ago in April, with swift assisted victim extrication in the event of an active shooter scenario. So we're trained in that. So again, those kinds of scenarios, we stay up on all that training, and are very excited about doing that. The people really enjoy doing that. And that's again, something that we did hand-in-hand with Chief Daly and his group, the Police Department. Worked out real well. Highlands High School, they were able to secure that for us on their spring break last year, and worked out very well. So again, it's a great time for us to get together with, again, our own people and train. So those kinds of things there throughout page 26. On page 27, Captain Tammy Webster took over the EMS program with Jeff Parker's retirement. And again, does a whale of a job there on page 27. She's kind of got some statistics broke down there. She's changed some things this year. We used to do monthly training. We now do every other month. We do it a little bit longer, but I think it kind of keeps our people's attentiveness a little bit better. We get a little bit better draw. Every year and every month, in the summer, it's tough to get people here, but if you can come in for three or four hours, you know, every other month, it works out well to get your continuing ed and keep it up. And so that's worked out real well. I compliment Tammy for doing that. What I wanted to point out just a second, because a couple of months ago, I know Judge Pendry was here and talked about the heroin epidemic and things. If you look at those EMS statistics, I didn't know if a question might arise as far as overdoses. You know, when we get dispatch from Campbell County Consolidated Dispatch, that dispatch could be you have an overdose run, or it could be an unconscious, unknown-type run, or something that we're not aware of. So if you see there, just directly in the bottom, there are overdoses was 3%. Well, yeah, that's where we truly got toned out as having an overdose scenario. But to the left of that is person down, 1%. That could be an overdose, or some kind of unknown unconscious. About midway up on the left is unconscious, 2%. And then unspecified is 26%. So all those could be, it could be an overdose-type scenario, or a heroin scenario. So we do track that the best we can with what dispatch tells us, as well as what they write up on their EMS reports. And so again, she's done a good job, great job, with breaking that down, and kind of making that as decipherable as possible. So I compliment Captain Webster on that. But you can go through. She's got a lot of statistics there, hours-wise, you know, through page 30, 31. On 32, it's kind of a, 32 and 33 are kind of a couple of things I wanted to kind of mention. And again, it's kind of neat because this group is in the audience, Shift Three. On Christmas Eve, up at the First Presbyterian Church at Avon Island South, they had a, we do a lot of, Chris Wolfek is in the crowd, teaches just this past weekend. We teach our first aid CPR class every other month again. But anyway, and train people to use AEDs. But on Christmas Eve up there, the organist, pianist, dropped over with a heart attack, and someone took the AED and revived him before we got on the scene, shocked him and brought him back. What a great story for the citizens of Fort Thomas. And again, Shift Three was there. They came in, they did their ALS care, transported that patient to the hospital. But because of that quick recognition of the person down, starting CPR, you know, getting the AED, shocking the patient, just in the timeframe it took from us to get from this facility a couple of blocks up the street, they already had the person revived. And so that's just a wonderful, it's a thank you letter. Captain Webster included that in her report, and I think that's very good, and worthy of noting. Page 33, obviously, is the run on September the 14th that we had on Coach Don. Everybody knows Ron. And again, you know, one of those scenarios that, as Chris teaches, and we all, all the guys that are instructors teach in the CPR classes, you know, there's a chain of survival, okay? And it starts with early recognition. His wife recognized he was having a problem, called 911. He collapsed. Chief Daly's group got there, did CPR. We arrived on the scene, shocked the patient, ALS care, transported the patient to definitive care of the hospital, and the whole chain of survival worked just exactly the way it was, all the way from the dispatch talking to his wife, to the end result of him walking out of there with a few medical corrections done, which I can attest for, that have helped him. So again, just a wonderful story. And again, it all revolves around training and education, and the quickness, the lot of people responding, and in particular, that again happened with Shift Three's personnel that's in the audience tonight. So it's kind of neat that they're here tonight. You know, page 34 just has some statistics. And again, 35 gets into, again, our stats. As I mentioned, we made 1,768 runs, 413 were fire runs, 130 were first response runs. That's when the ambulance is on another run, and the engine makes a response for an EMS call. 1,225 EMS calls for that total being 1,768. So you can see all those breakdowns that Captain Lump does, all the statistics. You've seen them every year. But again, they're kind of neat to look at, because we hold on to them for the five-year process. So yeah, it kind of is neat to kind of, you know, kind of compare as you go through there. With the fire stats, all the way up through page 44, and then on page 45 is some additional EMS response data. So again, just some neat things there. Hydrant data, we take a lot of pride in testing our hydrants, as we do other pieces of equipment, such as hose, which we're in the process of doing now. But hydrant testing with the Northern Kentucky Water District, Josh Edmondson takes care of that. And then also, the last page there is our fitness report, which again, it kind of comes back to those numbers I talked about earlier there. And Captain Webster kind of heads up that particular section. We have a fitness line item budget that we did work at and worked through a number of years ago, even before Joe was here with his dad. And so we do make sure that we keep our fitness equipment in the fitness room as up-to-date as possible, encourage our people to go down and use that facility. And that's a citywide facility. Chief Daly, and he's down there a lot, I know. So it's like, that's a citywide facility, so it's real, it's real important that we get down there and be as physically fit as possible to go out and do the job that these guys do every day. And again, I'm so proud of them for what they do. I guess with that being said, that's kind of the annual report in a nutshell. Obviously, you have had the opportunity, or will, I'm sure, more, be able to get into it and look at it a little bit more. And, you know, again, I'll be glad to field any questions you might have. But before I do that, I want to do one other item. Mr. Dill has a staff meeting with us department heads once a month. And about four or five months ago, it was back the end of '16 sometime, Chief Daly had a wonderful idea. And when he had the idea, as he does a lot of times, and we go back and forth, you see us at the meeting, particularly on riding on fire trucks and police cars. But anyway, I love you. Anyway, he had a wonderful idea. He said, what do you think about doing badges for the sesquicentennial? I got it out. Now I'm going to say 150. And I said, that's pretty neat, Mike, what do you think? He said, Shawn Donlin's got an idea. And I said, well, again, Chris Russ is kind of my arc guy, as I say with the front cover. I said, let's get them two together and see what they think. So we did that. I'm going to make this long story short. We got them two together. Chris drew up the design, the center design, which Mike has on, is blue for police, and is red for fire, which I have on, and my people have on, that are in their work uniforms. And so I said, that's neat, that come out really nice. And so we had those badges made, and Mike gave them to his people, I gave them to mine, and said, you know, I want you to wear them, you know, throughout the year here, as we, you know, again, move into '17 with the sesquicentennial. So again, it worked out really well. They did a good job. We bounced the idea off of Mr. Dill and Debbie Buckley, said, you know, what do you think about the design? But again, the bottom line was those two guys kind of took and run with it, with the red for fire and the police with blue for PD. So there's something about KRS and badges for police, and giving badges to, you know, non-police officers, et cetera, but there's really nothing for fire, okay? There's really not a whole lot for fire. So I kind of told Mike what I was going to do, and he was okay with that. So again, I wanted to make sure he knew what I was doing. So here's what I've done this year. I have had the opportunity to make you all badges, okay? And I'm going to start out with the mayor. You can read it, it has your name on it, and that is a badge for you for this year. But it's kind of a combination of departments that are doing that, but I know it's a fire design, but that way we won't get you any kind of arresting authority or anything. We also did them, and these are no particular order. I just pulled them out this way, but kind of fell this way. We also did them for the CAO, Mr. Dill, and for the assistant CAO, Mr. Ewald. Okay? So you can kind of take a look at those, and then hopefully these are in somewhat an order, or I'm just going to bounce all over, so it's going to be that way. But anyway, Mr. Slaughter.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterman.
Thank you.
Cameron.
Thank you.
Miss Kelly.
Yeah.
And Mr. Beazel.
Thank you.
Okay. So again, we thought it would be kind of nice, kind of a remembrance of the safety departments, and, you know, it's a fire design.
I love it.
Anyway, although it's a fire design, I love it too. And we, like I said, I couldn't ask for a better group of people to work with, both department-wise, as well as department head-wise. And so, you know, I'm just really, I'm really excited and honored to be here, and it's great to be with people like Mike, et cetera. And again, like I said, those 18 behind me, five of which are here tonight, are the best in the business. So I guess with that being said, I can field any questions. I know it's late, but I can field any questions you might have. And again, I want to thank you for the privilege and honor to stand before you again this year.
Chief, just one quick question. I know it's late, so I apologize to my fellow council members. What was your greatest challenge in 2016? If you could identify one challenge that you had to overcome?
Probably just maintaining staffing. We had some people that retired, so getting people back to work. We had some people that were injured. I have one gentleman that was off for an entire year, from October of '15 to October of '16. Actually, right at 365 days, I came back to work. So that, I have a scenario now, and that was an injury from a fire. I have an injury now from a work, with fitness activity, but that's, we encourage people to go down there and work out, because it's important to be fit. And so we have one now that's out with an injury. So I think just maintaining our staffing levels. My concern is, it is wonderful to come in here in the morning and see six people, right, guys? I mean, to see six people. And I understand people have vacation, and people get sick, and those kinds of things. You have time to get off, I understand it. But I love it when there's six, because every piece of equipment's covered. We can do anything we want. They're not having to kind of think about, let's put this truck down, let's move this, we're going to run this truck, et cetera. We're, you know, the staffing is probably the thing that concerns me the most. We do go down to four as our minimum staffing, but, you know, we're able to maintain that. But when the squad's out, that means that there's two people in the station, better than it was a number of years ago. But again, not the best, because again, we are busy. Our runs were down, yeah, a little bit last year. That's not to say that this year, they won't do the opposite, because they do fluctuate from year to year. So I think staffing probably was the thing that I, that I probably, if you want to say worry, worry about the most, just to make sure that, and I really never have to use, I really never have to worry, because they never let me down. They know that there's got to be an officer here and three other firemen. The day I walked in here, I told them, how do you work the overtime, and how do you work who's here and who's not here? And they showed me how they did it. And to this day, it's never let me down. And that's all I asked them. I said, don't ever let me get involved, because I'll, we'll make sure, we'll make sure something works to get her done. Because we're going to, but they have never let me down. So I think that that's probably the thing that I think about the most, thinks a better word, as far as staffing. So again, great year. Thanks for the opportunity. Mayor Haas, we've known each other a long time. It's been a pleasure to work for you, and Mr. Dill, and you all. But again, any questions you might have, or again, the door's open, now it's nice weather, stop in, see us, bring your family, et cetera.
Just one real quick question. You provided a lot of great information, and, you know, graphs and so on, that were easy to read. And I looked at those and tried to look for any patterns or any trends, and, you know, types of incidents, and volume, and, you know, mutual aid and all that. And I really couldn't see anything. Is there anything that you could, you know, that you ought to point out to us?
It's really, it's really unique, I mean, how things run. Like I said, our numbers were down a little bit this past year. Other years, they've been up. Mutual aid, I think, I think we're making more mutual aid runs, because people are having the same, around us are having the same issues with staffing. There's some studies out there now that, you know, and again, Fort Thomas is blessed, is really blessed, for a number of reasons. And obviously, you probably know those as well as I do, but with great people, great pay, et cetera. But, you know, there's a lot of retirements on the horizon in the next five years. And then with retirements, there's openings. And with openings, you know, that we need more paramedics. And there's just not the, not the group that we had to pull from years ago, even way many years ago when I was there. So I mean, as far as trends, and I think there's things that we look at, you know, and constantly keep our eyes on. But, you know, I know we're relying on one another even more, meaning all the other departments, because of those kinds of things, because they're all struggling with, you know, just some of those issues. So, yeah, I mean, but yeah, you can look, and the numbers are kind of weird. Like I said, each year, they're kind of, if you take those that have been here with me, and those that haven't, I have some extra copies, if you'd like to look at them and study them. I mean, those, you know, times when you could lay them side by side and go, wow, this year was up. Plus, you've got them here for five years, too, certain statistics. So it's like, but if you looked at the graphs, there's really nothing to say what's, what stands out, or what's more prevalent. I just wanted to kind of point out, because everybody's talking about the heroin epidemic, I want to kind of point that out, that we might get a call specifically for that, but then we might get an unknown unconscious call, that has to be documented that way, until these professionals get on the scene to, you know, ascertain what's exactly going on with the patient. So I don't know if that answers your question.
No, it doesn't.
But I think that, there's some things, it's kind of, it's kind of fluctuates. I'm sure Chief sees the same thing with various trends and various different things. It just kind of fluctuate around. So again, I thank you all very, very much, and again, appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Good report. Thanks, Chief.
Thanks for the badges. This is really, from everybody.
Can you be through?
Yeah, is there a second to that, Mr.?
Second.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beazel?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter?
Aye. Awesome. Police Department Annual Report.
Before I get started, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Thank you, Mr. Dill. Thank you, Mr. Ewald. Please make sure we don't put these badges in our wallets, so like, if you get pulled over on a traffic stop, you're kind of opening up that wallet and the badge is showing. Now, there is a lot of back and forth between Chief Daly and I, and I can't ever let him one-up. So I do have a badge for you guys, just so you all know.
Chief Daly, I brought one for you also. It's a police department badge.
Okay. Junior, I love it. Thanks.
It's not an official, won't violate any curators.
I know.
You have a lot of young children.
That's why we get along so well. Got to love him.
I can't do like that.
Look at that cigarette. I mean, can't. Can I do that? Somebody would do that.
This is great.
Take a chance.
Thanks.
Before I get on my report, Chief Daly did bring up a lot about the heroin epidemic that we have. Before I get on my report, Chief Bailey did bring up a lot about the heroin epidemic that we have in the region. And we had a really sad case the other day where we had an overdose close by here to the city building. Fire department did a fantastic job responding. However, a very interesting story. The overdose was a female subject. Her daughter was three years old. She was with her when she overdosed and collapsed. She ran to the neighbor's house and had the neighbor call 911, which obviously, fire department, police department got the call. And we responded. It all turned out positive, but it just goes to show how strong this epidemic is and how it affects even a three-year-old. And it's really sad to see. With that said, I'll get started on the annual report. And I'll guide you guys through this. I'll go through it pretty quick. It's a pretty simple report to explain. On the cover, Nathan Day and Brent Munning thought that, you know, our cover this year should represent, you know, our city's important year coming up. So they thought it'd be neat to jumpstart, even though it doesn't have anything to do with 2016, you know, the 150th anniversary of, of the city that's taking place this year. So they did a great job of putting our badge on there. And the front cover actually did turn out very nice. If everybody could just turn to page six. One of the things I wanted to do in my letter from me is I really geared my letter towards our community. Law enforcement in general has changed so much in the last five years with community relations and some negative things that have taken place within our nation with police and communities. And one of the things that we as a police department continue to see, especially last year, was just the outpouring from our community, always bringing us stuff, always sending us cards, gift certificates, food. And on a monthly basis, we're just absolutely amazed by what our Fort Thomas community does for us. And they really, truly do appreciate us. And we can definitely feel that as a group. So if you get a chance to take a read on that, please do. Because I definitely try to gear that for, for our Fort Thomas community. On page nine, it just gets into our mission statement. Page 10 and 11 gets into our department values, which are the things that lead us as a department. On page 13, we just broke it down for our organizational chart within the city and obviously within the police department. Page 14 and 15, obviously it was a positive year because we were able to bring Wayne Biddle on board. And if you get a chance, if you can look at the March monthly report and look at Wayne's stats for the month of March, he is doing a incredible job on third shift. Just if you can look down and break down his statistics for what he's doing on third shift, he has been a fantastic hire. On page 16, 17, 18, and 19, I think we gave him a little too much press. It's gonna go to his head. So please don't let him know about this, but I'm just about gonna give him a copy. But we thought it was important for Chris Goshen, who retired from us after 21 years of service, to do a nice layout for him. On page 20, obviously it gets into promotions. We were able to do a positive promotion in 2016 of Sergeant William Hunt. And I have to tell you, he's leading second shift and he is absolutely outstanding as a sergeant. He is amazing. He has grown so much since he has taken over that role. And you guys will be very, very proud of him. On page 21, we get into professional excellence from Nick Hoffman, receiving the Seatbelt Award. And obviously from Michael Dietz, receiving the DUI Award. Both of them did a great job in these areas. Page 22, 23, we thought it'd be neat just to mention the article that came out about Fort Thomas named the safest city in Kentucky. It's always nice every year when the publications come out that we do get a lot of positive press. I'm still working on that bonus with Joe, but it might get him anywhere. So I'll keep trying. On page 24, it starts to get into, you know, some of our 2016 statistics. It also compares it a little bit to 2015. One of the things that I picked up on that I just wanted to note, there's two things. Number one, drug-related. Obviously, you saw in 2015, 285. In 16, we went up to 367. Drug numbers are up and it's definitely heroin-fueled. And we all know that. It's definitely controlling this region and it's not going away anytime soon. If you look at warrants, we served 241 warrants in 2015. In 2016, we jumped up to 279. And we looked into these warrants. And a lot of the warrants increased because they're heroin-related. Because the people that are being arrested for heroin are not showing up to court or cannot afford their, the fines that they're receiving. So there's warrants that are being issued. And I tell you, the guys on FTPD have done a great job of getting out there and making those traffic stops and, you know, getting these warrants. And I, one of the areas that we really saw an increase with our warrants with heroin-related was when we had the hit team working in February, March, and April. Goshorn and Fock and Hoffman just did a bang-up job in those three months. And the amount of statistics that they produced during those three months was absolutely amazing. Michelle Snodgrass, who's the Campbell County prosecutor, she says 80% of all felonies for the county are heroin-related. So it's something to always keep in mind. It's something that we're gonna have to keep working on as a region. And like Mark said, the neat thing is, on the fireside and on the police side, we are taking a regional approach. We are supporting each other and it's a nice thing to have. If everybody could take, turn to pages 26 and 27. That's just getting into 2016 offenses reported and also the 2016 incidents reported. On page 28, gets into a lot of comparison data from back, going back to 2007. One thing you notice is that over the last couple of years, our accidents have gone up. And some of that, and I'm gonna keep repeating this, but it is very true, is very much related to people driving under the influence of heroin. So we are seeing those kind of accidents. On page 29 through 31, it gets into the training that we received in 2016. You know, and one of the biggest things in Fort Thomas since I've ever been here is this department and this city believes in training. And that's what makes the police department and the fire department so special, to be out there, to be able to go out there and do their job every day. And I always say this, but thank you very much for supporting us with our training. If you get a chance, look down through each person. There's a lot of interesting training things that each person got to go through and improve with certain skill sets for that individual. On page 32 and 33, it gets into our firearms training, which is one of the most important things that we do as a police department, besides all the other training that we receive. One of the things that we are trying to do from year to year is we're always trying to become more realistic with our training. We have seen so many increases throughout the United States with ambushes on police officers. And 2016 was very bad for it because law enforcement deaths increased significantly just because of ambushes. So part of our training is, we do gear ourselves around the different trends that we're seeing from year to year so that our officers are being safe. On page 34 through 36, it gets into investigations, also 37, 38, 39. And if you get a chance, Detective Noe did a incredible job developing this article. Please take a read at it. It's got a lot of great information. The only thing I want to comment on it on page 36, if you can see at the conclusion, Detectives Noe, Detectives Roland, and Lieutenant Whitford were able to successfully close 62% of the cases that came across their desk. The national average is 30%. So they did a bang-up job and I'm very proud of them. And it's not just the three. It also gets into patrol. Uniform does come into play and it's very much a team effort. On page 39 through 40, 41 and 42, if you get a chance to read this case study, please do. It's very interesting. Adam did a great job of breaking down how the accident on 275, which was heroin-related, where the baby was ejected from the car and thrown into the air. He literally breaks down this investigation from beginning to end. And it's very interesting to see how time-consuming an investigation can be, but how neat it is when the investigation comes, you know, together. And as you can see on page 42, it was a very successful outcome because the two people did end up going to jail, which is a good thing. On page 43, it gets into statistics for the Campbell County Drug Task Force that we have placed, in place within Campbell County. And, you know, once again, it's a regional approach here in Campbell County and it's a neat thing to have. Not only are we trying to fight, you know, targeting the heroin traffickers, we also have a crime scene team. We also have an accident reconstruction team. We also have detectives that just back each other up and support each other on the bigger cases. And it's just a great thing to have here in Campbell County. On page 44 and 45, it gets into the SWAT article, which we have Sergeant Carpenter, Officers Bryant, and Officers Dietz on the team. And that's another regional approach. It's departments from Canton County and Campbell County. And they've got one heck of a group put together. And they receive a lot of great training and it's a very nice thing to be involved in. Sheriff Corzenborn is a great man, good leader for Canton County Sheriff's Department. And he does a fantastic job of leading the SWAT team. On page 46, it's a small article about Officer Brandon Laughin. It talks about one of the cases where he was the first in the state to successfully prosecute importing heroin into the state of Kentucky. And if you get a chance, look at Brandon Laughin's statistics for the month, the month of March. He is a young officer. He's very active. He gets out there, he pulls cars over, and he does a fantastic job, just like all the officers. And then on page 47 through the last page, I say this every year, but these are my favorite pages because this truly, these pages truly represent what our police department is truly, what it is about. And it is about the community. And you can see in these pictures too, the police department, we look at ourselves as a family and we feel that way. We have that vibe within our police department. We're very close. And you can look at each page, the certain events from Shop with a Cop to the Special Olympics that we're very involved in. And then everything else within the community that we do that's very positive. And I'm a big believer in, in the community and our officers, all of us getting out and being involved because we live in a community in Fort Thomas and it, it needs that balance. You gotta be proactive, but you gotta have the, the community activity also. Other than that, if there's any questions, I will try to ask them for you.
I don't have any questions, but I, I must say, I did read your letter. And I was really impressed by that and, you know, we've been, and I was only on the Public Safety Committee for one term. That's not really my forte. But what you expressed in this letter came across in, you know, some of the interview processes that I was involved with on that. And so it seems apparent to me that this really is a culture of the force. And it's different than fire, right? I mean, just like the badges are different, you know, the law is different, your responsibility is different, and your relationship with the public is gonna be different.
Sure.
And, and I'm wondering, and I don't know if we post these on the website or not, but I, I'm really, we ought to post this somewhere, ought to highlight this letter so that people have more likelihood of reading it. Because it's just a great statement in times, as you point out in the letter, where police relationships nationally aren't, you know, on, on the upswing that much. And that's just so important. And all that can be true and we can, and still be the safest community in Kentucky. So how about that? It's really working. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thanks. You got them both on. I like it.
So favorite is? All right.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We moved your seat and thought. Second.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Beazel.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter.
Aye.
Actually, I don't, I do not have a lot. The only thing I have in my report is, we are working and Chief, maybe wanted to comment on the police recruit process. We're actually going through the police recruit process. We are short one officer at present. Been through the testing, the written testing, the physical testing, the background, and have it narrowed down. That process includes interview within the department. But we will be asking the Public Safety Committee, the committee, to interview those final candidates. So the member, I noted the members in the memo. So you will get a chance to see that again, Mr. Peterman. And we'll bring final candidates that I think we're looking at in a week. So I'll put an email out to see if we can get our calendars for that. And then we are at staff level doing budget preparation. So we're spending some time doing that. And we will have a working budget draft for the finance committee and hoping to meet with that group on May 29. We had other topics in the business, but that's all I had in the report.
All right. Old Business VA Homes Update.
Well, actually, good news to report. We are on schedule. And in my memo, I outlined kind of the timeframe that we're looking at moving forward. So I guess really the, the thing to note is that all news is good news, in terms of getting toward a closing. So the few items that are left with the VA seem to be coming to a conclusion. We don't anticipate that there's anything outstanding with regard to the potential transfer of properties. They're still targeting a May closing date. As I've indicated in the past, you know, as long as this is taken, when we get to the end, not to steal from you, but it's kind of a fire drill now. So we really are at that point. So you'll see in the outline of the timeframe that we're asking council to have a special meeting. Let me step back from that. This Wednesday, Plating, Fort Thomas Planning Commission will consider a zone change and development plan for the project. So it will be presented by myself and the developer for a requested zone change. Even though we don't own the property within the MOA, it affords us the right to ask that question and change the zoning on the property. And the VA has, has indicated that they're okay with that. So we are proceeding, which is, which is a foreshadowing that we're close. So we will be Wednesday evening at 7:30 in this, in this room. So we'll be presenting that plan for consideration. Of course, by statute, that would come as a recommendation from the Planning Commission to City Council. So you will receive the recommendation, hopefully, if the timeframe holds. And that would be forwarded for your consideration at the special meeting on May 1st. And, and the purpose of that is, it has to have first reading, second reading, and publication for it to become in effect. And we would like that to be done in advance of actually taking ownership of the property. The second item with that is the development agreement between the city and the developer. We're working toward that. All the details that involve all the infrastructure and all the improvements and the working relationship between the city and the developer, the timing of all those aspects will be spelled out in that development agreement. It is in a moving draft form, shall we say. And so it will reflect all those items that would, would create that relationship between the city and the developer, that would allow the transfer from immediately after the city obtains the property from the VA that we will then transfer the property to the developer. We, our hope is that is in a draft form, that we have a committee in the whole meeting, that we can present to City Council prior to the special council meeting on May 1st. That will be an opportunity, obviously, to look at that in draft form, hopefully in final draft form. It does not require your action at that May 1st meeting, but... but if it were in a condition that it would be acceptable, it could be acted upon at that time. But it will not mess the timeframe in regard to the closing if it's deferred until a regular May meeting. So the second reading will take place at the regularly scheduled May 15 meeting and also perhaps final consideration of the development agreement at that meeting. And what that all leads to is potentially closing on the property by the end of May. So that is the target date. The information we're getting from the VA is, they feel like that's a timeframe they can work within. Worst-case scenario, they understand that we would very much like to own that property or for them not to own that property come July 1st in time to celebrate our sesquicentennial, which I say very easy. Just like saying it all the time. So that is the outline and timeframe. I don't know if anybody has any questions, but that's kind of where we are. So that's all positive movement forward. All right. Well, we'll be seeing a lot of each other in May then. The rest, another item, old business that was not on the agenda. And I know we had a report, our annual report on the deer study. And I'd like to just bring forward perhaps a recommendation to council. I know Mr. Peterman asked staff to go back and look at this issue. And obviously, it's been studied in the past, and our ordinance has been updated in the past. And I'd like to suggest to council that we defer any type of study and report on that at this time. And for this reason, at the City Managers Association, we have been working with the Kentucky Division of Wildlife. And they are actually working on an urban deer model that they would like to utilize throughout the state. And I think I made some reference to that. So they are actually scheduled to appear here and represent kind of their approach on what they are looking at statewide at our September meeting. So I would like to perhaps hear from them in that forum and then perhaps bring that information and share that with council and then maybe look at our overall program after we have that information.
That makes a lot of sense. I mean, I guess for the record, just, I'll just make a motion that we defer any action until after we hear that.
Do a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Now we are down to new business. Public Works Committee of Council, 2017 street resurfacing. Dan, you got something on that?
I do. My report to council. We, the undersigned members of Public Works Committee of Council, here my report to the public hearing that was conducted on Tuesday, March 21st, 2017, regarding the city's proposed 2017 street resurfacing program. 2017 resurfacing program consists of the following streets: Custis Avenue, Diana Court, Highview Drive, Lafayette Court, Lilac Lane, and Washington Avenue. Committee members and staff concluded the hearing, which was attended by approximately 35 residents and property owners, 13 of which addressed the committee. 117 properties are being assessed, so approximately 11 percent of the affected property owners spoke at the meeting, or at the public hearing. Generally speaking, there was support for the proposed improvements outlined in the attached Engineers Comprehensive Report. Several asked questions specific to deteriorating conditions or drainage issues on their streets. Some asked questions about the timeframe for completion. There were several complaints about speeding and/or speed hops. One resident expressed concern regarding the method of assessment and the cost to residents, suggesting there should be a fairer assessment, assessment method involving all residents annually. There was also a request to consider lowering the interest rate for deferred payments. Generally, questions were addressed at the hearing, and staff will provide follow-up on other issues discussed. Based upon the results of the public hearing, the Public Works Committee of Council hereby recommends that the city proceed with the street resurfacing improvements as proposed and that the Board of Council authorize the first reading of the ordinance acknowledging the city's intent to proceed with the project.
Good job.
So based on this input we had tonight, is there, and I don't know that that affects approving this, you know, the ordinance or taking official action, but is there going to be reconsideration of anything?
You know, based on what we've heard tonight, and I think there was a submittal of a petition from owners on Washington, I think, it's not unprecedented for us to go back and look at that issue, potentially with property owners. We could perhaps set up a public meeting to meet on-site with them and have our engineers available to discuss that issue. Widening the street in the program and deleting it from the program issue would not affect us moving forward with the program. If we were to pull the street off, obviously, that would have an impact. Or if we were to change the scope of the project beyond what was discussed at the public hearing, then we would have to start that process over again. So I think, I think we could have, you know, questions and have input from residents regarding that issue that was brought forward this evening if we wanted to do that.
So if you change it from widening it to not widening it, do you have to start the process over again?
No.
I like your idea of meeting with the residents, arranging a meeting, and maybe taking a second look at it.
Yeah, I mean, what we, I think we've done that in the past. And what we do is basically send a notice, inviting them to meet with us on-site and share that conversation and have interaction with them. Obviously, the committee of council would be involved as well.
There are approved bids that would have to be monitored. I suppose if a different action were...
I mean, we have not developed our bid documents yet.
Okay. Yeah, we haven't gotten them.
So we would do that immediately. I mean, we would have set something a week out or two weeks out.
Quick. As far as the suggestion for the no-through traffic sign, is that something we'd have to have a special, another Public Works Committee meeting to do, or is that something that we could kind of...
No, I think that's an administrative decision.
Okay.
Not, it could be an executive.
Okay, so.
I like administrative.
We could expect it. I think that sounds... We would request for signage, road signage. I mean, as long as we meet standards of signage. Again, placing it as we heard this evening doesn't necessarily...
No, but it'd be somewhat of a deterrent. Sure, wouldn't hurt, it would help us on.
And Ron and I had a conversation after the meeting. There's more options than just a no-through street sign. We discussed a bunch of different signage options. And I think that the Public Works crew, and then Ron with his experience, could probably pick out the best options for us there. Not necessarily, you know, for example, but also.
So the recommendation is, go ahead and pass this, and then have a, then meet and then make adjustments later if we need to make adjustments. Correct? Is that right?
Yes. I don't think it affects our intent to proceed, as long as you're not wanting to change the scope of the project, you know, what was discussed.
Got you. Okay. So that's out there, just to put the sack them up later? Yeah, let's send here for the readings.
So you have a, you have a report, so you just go...
Oh, but...
To accept.
Yes.
Motion to accept the report.
All right. Do a second.
Second.
For the discussion. We'll call over.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beasley?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter?
Aye.
Okay. Now, before we go on, I messed up on the agenda because we had to listen to the annual reports from these guys and then monthly reports, so I skipped down. But I have to go back up to a proclamation. I have a proclamation to... You guys want to stay here one? This is a proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed of planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the USA and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of a precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs and moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas beautified, our community, and can be a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas 2016 was the 26th year that the city of Fort Thomas was designated as a Tree City, USA, by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue to foster additional tree planting. Now therefore, I, Eric Haas, as mayor of the city of Fort Thomas, do hereby proclaim that April 22nd, 2017, be hereby designated as Arbor Day and urge all citizens of Fort Thomas to support efforts to care for and preserve our landmark trees, those in our residential, commercial areas, and further to plant, care for, and preserve trees throughout our community to enhance the spirit and well-being for our present and future generations. Signed this 23rd day of April, 2016. Anyway, that's the proclamation. So, two other items.
Can I just add real quick? Yes. In celebration of Arbor Day and Earth Day, the city does work with a lot of volunteer groups. And there is a, an effort this weekend. They'll be working on the Landmark Tree Trail and the trails in Highland Park.
That's right.
So if any volunteers are interested.
Yeah.
And in association with that, there's typically tree plantings that occur as well. And also this year, we have started, the city working with the garden club doing, they're coming up on their 100-year, they're going to plant 100 trees in the city over a period of time. And we've started that process with them.
Awesome.
But this weekend is volunteer, and the information is on the city's website. And it's our...
Okay. So now back to reports of officers. Your monthly reports, do you all have?
Mm-mm. Move to receiving.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay. We'll call police. That was for both of them.
Yes. Files.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beasley?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter?
Aye.
Financial committee reporting disbursements.
Reported disbursements, March 21st through April 17th, 2017. General fund, $219,601.60. Tower Park Fund, $88. Public Work KDOT Fund, $8,464.47. Reoccurring Debt Service Fund, $1,140.88. CBD Revitalization, $9,467.31. Waste Fees, $70,813.87. Police and Fire Pension Fund, $1,871.23. Total, $311,447.36. We, the undersigned members of Finance Committee, recommend that warrants numbered 178231914 be approved and the treasurer be authorized to if he checks your agreement. Mr. Peterman, chairperson, Ms. Kelly, member, and Mr. Beasley, member.
Do you understand the motion? Move quickly. Is there a second?
Second.
We'll call over.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Beasley?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter?
Aye.
General resolutions and orders, ordinance O2, 2017, closing and vacating a portion of Tower Place.
This is a summary of ordinance number O02, 2017. An ordinance closing and vacating a portion of Tower Place located in the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky. The council has determined that a portion of Tower Place should be closed. The legal description of the portion to be closed is described in Exhibit A and on the flat Exhibit B. The owners of the property which abuts the portion of Tower Place to be closed are Charles C. Tru, Jr., Michelle A. Tru, Douglas W. Stomp, Minette S. Stomp. They have consented for the closing of the portion of Tower Place.
That's the first reading. We have another ordinance, O3, 2017, to treat the surface.
This is a summary of ordinance number O03, 2017. An ordinance providing for and bordering a street improvement at Custis Avenue from its intersection with Washington Avenue to its intersection with Alexandria Pike, Diana Court from its intersection with Highview Drive to its terminus, Highview Drive from its intersection with Highland Avenue to its terminus, Lafayette Court from its intersection with Washington Avenue to its terminus, Lilac Lane from its intersection with Highview Drive to its intersection with Newman Avenue, and Washington Avenue from its intersection with Highland Avenue to the city's corporate boundary with the city of Newport being Joyce Avenue. All in the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and all in accordance with the plans and specifications thereof, is submitted by the city engineer and is approved by the Board of Council of the city of Fort Thomas, and further providing that the actual cost of the construction of said street improvements are to be borne by the city 50 percent and the property owner 50 percent, and providing for the payment of an improvement assessment. The Public Works Committee of Council conducted a public hearing on March 21st, 2017, to solicit public comment regarding proposed improvements to Custis Avenue, Diana Court, Highview Drive, Lafayette Court, Lilac Lane, and Washington Avenue. The following streets or portions that are up shall be improved as described in the ordinance, and the total preliminary cost estimates for front foot are as follows. Custis Avenue, $34,950. Diana Court, $14,360. Highview Drive, $109,475. Lafayette Court, $7,450. Lilac Lane, $25,750. Washington Avenue, $46,172. Please see ordinance for complete description of specific work on each street. Please see the attached schedule listing property descriptions, frontages, and anticipated costs. Upon completion and acceptance of the work under the contract, the cost shall be assessed to said lots and the owners according to the number of front feet.